Good morning, Mr. Wood. I'm Steve Parsons, President of the Thirteenth Mutual Board. This is a call to order for Third Mutual's special forum. Welcome to you all. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the press and to let you know we are broadcasting live on TV 6 and streaming via Granicus. Thank you all for joining us. Please welcome Annie McCary, our first Vice President of Third Mutual, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Director McCary.
Thank you, Director Parsons. Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. We had originally -- we're going to bring to you our two new candidates for our board. However, in the interest of time, we're going to go ahead and delay that and do some more time with them at our upcoming board meeting, which comes up in about two weeks. So we'll continue that time with our two new candidates. At this time, I'll turn it back to our moderator, David Deering.
Good morning, everyone. I'm David Deering, your moderator and fellow neighbor here in Third Mutual. On behalf of Third Mutual, welcome to this special forum dedicated to questions from you about the ballot proposition. We have three officers of our Third Mutual Board seated on our panel today to answer any questions you may have, and we have plenty of time to field your questions. Here they are. Please raise your hand as I recognize you. Director, Steve Parsons, President, who called us to order. Thank you, Steve. Director, Annie McCary, first Vice President.
Good morning.
And Robert Mutchnick, our Treasurer. Good morning, all. Thank you. And also joining us today is Elise Rothrock, Supervisor of Media and Communications and Editor of The Village Breeze. Elise is celebrating her birthday today. Happy birthday, please.
Happy birthday.
We won't sing, but we'll wish you a happy birthday. Attending online is Third Mutual Legal Counsel Sandra Gottlieb from the firm of Swetelson Gottlieb. I'd like at this time to bring a few housekeeping notes to your attention we'll be doing through the question and answer session for most of our time today. People watching us on TV 6 or streaming through Granicus, you can connect with us by texting or calling this number, (949) 354-4199. Please identify yourself by name and manor number when you text or call. Now, we have an important statement from the board by Director and Treasurer, Robert Mutchnick. Robert?
Thank you, David, and welcome, everybody, this morning. I want to start by saying I owe you an apology. I'm the person who is responsible for the matrix Exhibit E, Page 136 of the CCNRs. From feedback through emails and phone calls, you've shared with us your concerns and confusion regarding the matrix. I want you to know that we've heard you loud and clear, and I intend to fix the problem. You need to know that there was never any intent by me or the board to shift any additional maintenance responsibilities to you, the homeowner. When the matrix was completed, there were, to put it simply, errors made by me in checking the boxes that indicate whether the owner or the mutual is responsible. These errors were unintentional, but errors still the same, and you have pointed them out to us. You have my word, that is homeowners, of which I'm one, that you will not have any additional maintenance responsibilities under the newly restated CCNRs. Whatever we, as homeowners, were responsible for under the current resolutions, we will continue to be responsible for, and the mutual will continue to be responsible for everything else. These errors are what are typically described as Scrivener's errors, which is a legal term that relates to non-deliberative errors made in writing on a final document. I, the Scrivener or scribe, mischecked some of the boxes. I literally placed who was responsible for maintenance obligations in the wrong column of the matrix. As I said, this was my mistake, and I take full responsibility. I have discussed this with the full board, and we will be correcting the matrix as soon as possible, and we will share it with you by posting the revised matrix with the correct responsibility designation in the correct column on Third Mutual's documents page located at the Laguna Woods website. Let me make this clear: When the ballot proposition passes, there will be no change in the existing maintenance responsibilities in place for Third Mutual. Some of you have asked, why can't we just strike Exhibit E, the matrix, from the ballot proposition? The answer: Legally, because voting is in process. The proposed Third Mutual CCNRs and bylaws cannot be altered or amended in any way. We must wait until after the voting is complete and the ballot measure has been approved to attach the revised matrix. You will, however, be able to review online the revised matrix as a separate document. We're in the process of making that available to all of you on our website. When the proposition passes, we will be able to legally attach the revised matrix with the corrections to the approved CCNRs. If you have questions, and I know you do, please text or call the ballot proposition hotline at (949) 354-4199. Address your questions to me, and I'll be happy to answer. Once again, I sincerely apologize for the accidental misinformation in the matrix and for the confusion that it's created. We understand how difficult this decision is. We're listening to you, and we are affirming here that we will address these issues by correcting the CCNRs consistent with my representation in this statement by which the entire board agrees to be bound. We thank you for your voices and for being truly engaged in this important vote. I hope that you will allow us to make the village the best place that it can be. Thank you. David?
Thank you, Director Mutchnick. Now, without further ado, let's get to our Q and A segment. Remember, people watching us on TV 6 or streaming through Granicus, you can pose a question by texting or calling this number, same number as Robert just shared with us, (949) 354-4199. I'll give you a second to grab a pencil. That's (949) 354-4199. When you call, please identify yourself by name and manor number. We would certainly appreciate that, and we would like to know who you are and where you live. Thank you for that. Okay, let's take our first question. Elise assisting us today. Thank you, Elise, for your cooperation and participation. What question do you have for the board?
Thank you. Our first question comes from John Househalter of 5046 Avenida del Sol. "I agree that the insurance changes will require revising the CCNRs, but in addition to some insurance changes, it seems like I am really accepting a great deal more liability with the new CCNRs. I am not a legal person, and perhaps I just don't understand some things. I would appreciate getting a response on the following questions: gutters and downspouts, foundations and structural components of the unit in the dwelling area, door frame and jamb, exterior paint of window trim, window frames and window flashings, fireplace firebox, flue and chimney, patios, balconies, courtyards, entryways, fences or walls, patio courtyard slab, structural portions of garage support -- carport, excuse me. All of these no longer HOA but the resident. I realize your concerns, but I do not intend to take on additional liabilities and expenses because you want to lower our insurance costs. Interior walls, yes, that is our responsibility, but when the HOA is negligent with roof or plumbing repairs, et cetera, and you have water intrusion damage, they use to cover the full repair except for painting. Sounds like you are making it our full responsibility."
Thank you for that question. That's a good question. I believe that was already addressed by Robert in his opening statement, but let's hear from Robert again, please.
Yes, sir. Those are all very valid questions, and I want to assure you, as I indicated in the opening statement, that all those items that you're referring to, whatever was in existence now in terms of what the owner's responsible for, will continue to be in existence once the new CCNR is approved. No additional responsibilities will be shifted to you. Now, the other thing I want to clarify, just so that we're all on the same page, is that there is a difference between original and alterations. If you have altered your unit, if you've added an addition, then you are responsible for the gutters and downspouts and the roof associated with that addition. If you have modified bathrooms, things of that nature, for instance, in my unit, I've added a bathroom, so I'm responsible for the bathroom, including the plumbing that was added by me. But if you're talking original plumbing, original building, all those kinds of things, nothing is going to change in terms of your responsibility as an owner.
Thank you, Robert. I think the key word here is "original." Any modifications you've made, you are responsible for, but otherwise, no changes. Elise, may we have the next question, please?
Yes, our next question comes from Richard Dettori. "Sorry to say I attended both town halls on Village TV without hearing you list and address questions like reduced maintenance and repair responsibilities. How about an ongoing FAQ list?"
There we have another question, seemingly similar to the other one, perhaps would like to address that on the board.
Well, I'll talk about it a little bit here, and I'm sure Sandra would like to chime in on this, too. But we are developing a list of frequently asked questions with answers to them. They will be posted in the near future for people to be able to look up on the website and see. Sandra, do you have any additional comments on that?
No, they are being monitored and answered by the board, and we are working with the board's directors to make sure they are compliant with the governing documents and state laws in our responses. As for the maintenance responsibilities that Richard brought up in his questions, I think that was addressed by Robert in his presentation.
I'm holding up now a list that was given to me this morning of frequently asked questions. It's nine pages, and as Sandra said, as soon as this is finalized, we'll make sure that this is available to all the residents. Thank you. I'm hopeful that that answered your question. Elise, please.
Deborah Saboda of 3490B. "I understand that the insurance situation is dire. I also understand that the HOA will go up if we do not vote yes. My question is, what individual coverage will we lose or have to pay for separately if we vote yes?"
Beginning to hear a theme here. Robert?
Okay, I'll be happy to take that insurance question. There will be no change to the coverage that you will have to carry as an individual owner, assuming you choose to carry an HO6 policy, which of course we would encourage everybody to carry an HO6 policy, which covers their interior of their unit. If there is a fire, if your unit is destroyed, we will rebuild that unit to its original footprint. That's what we cover in terms of insurance. However, if you have any additions or serious upgrades that you've done to the unit, those will be your responsibility, and that's where your HO6 policy comes in. But in terms of the new CCNRs, the kind of insurance coverage we're going to carry, there will be no additional requirements shifted to you that you have to insure for.
Great. Thank you very much.
David, I could just add a comment. David, I just would like to add a comment as a reminder to everybody, if you're HO6 policies, please make sure you speak to your insurance brokers to make certain that you have riders on that policy for loss assessment coverage, because there was a special assessment due to a catastrophic loss or some other purpose, and earthquake insurance. And you can use that for the interior of your unit and the damages by having a rider through a special policy.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sandra. Let's move on, then. Elise, may we have another question, please?
Yes, this next question is from Frank Kern from 33550. "My question is based on my understanding that the proposed new CCNRs remove the full replacement value feature from current insurance terms so that less expensive coverage can be obtained. If that is the case, what is the percentage of full replacement value that will be used? My read of the proposed document did not find such a minimum figure. I feel some reasonable minimum needs to be specified to safeguard against an arbitrary low percentage being used in the future that would seriously disadvantage owners in the event of a major incident like a large-scale fire, for example."
And who on the board would like to direct the response to that question, please?
I'll take part of it here, anyway.
Thank you.
The insurance -- first off, we went through a revaluation this year. The insurance company said they weren't going to cover us until we did that. Here to fore, we were covered at $700 million coverage for full replacement value for Third Mutual, and that's Third Mutual only. Revaluation for Third came in at $1.6 billion, okay? As anybody could do the math, there's no way you could afford something like that. Plus, we found that we couldn't find enough insurance coverage to get up to that point. So, something else that we did this year was hire a company recognized by insurance companies that went out and did an assessment of what they would consider to be the worst-case scenario that we would incur here for the village, and that came out to $150 million, okay? So, in our particular case, we are looking at not only the $150, but we are still trying to -- we are -- we have bound insurance up to $700 million for Third Mutual, and $425 million of that is a shared policy with GRF and United. So, we and Third are covered up to $700 million. So, as you can see, that's what we did in the past. That's what the board felt like we could afford for this coming year, and that's what we bound for.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm hopeful that that answers your question as well, okay? If you look in the Globe from time to time or get in touch with any of the realtors around here, you can see the difference in the estimated worth of Third Mutual as compared to in the past, okay? So, thank you again for your answer, Steve. May we have the next question, please?
Joan Brown from 3293A asks, "Where are the old and new CCRs so we can compare? I see Mutual 22 written on the existing CCNRs. I live in Mutual 68. Where are those CCNRs? I also own rental property in Mutual 49. So where can I find the CCNRs for Mutuals 49 and 68?"
Great question.
Okay. Our staff has those documents?
Let's see that.
Okay, go ahead, Sandra.
Sandra?
We provided all of the CCNRs and tracts to Eileen yesterday at her request. Somebody else had asked the question as well. We had to pull all of the CCNRs in order to restate the governing documents. She's in possession of them now and is deciding how to upload them, but you can, in fact, access the applicable tract for your unit, and then you'll be able to compare those governing documents to the proposed and restated governing documents.
Thank you, Sandra. Any other additional comments from any one on the board? Robert?
The part of the question was also about where can they see the new CCNRs? And you can go to -- what was the web address? I forget the web address. T, is it?
And actually, if you just go to the Laguna Woods website.
Thank you. You're right.
And under Documents.
I'm sorry. There was a very special web address, and I forgot what it was, but you can go to Laguna Woods website, hit Residents, drop down, hit Third Mutual, and if you hit Third Mutual, it'll come up with the page with the new documents. Thank you, and I apologize. It slipped my mind what the specific website was.
Lot of information to keep in your head. Okay. Hope that was a satisfactory answer. Thank you for your question. Elise, may we have the next question, please?
Wayne Gartner asks, "Why is there a vote needed for this? Why don't you just clean up the mess that's been going on for decades from kicking the can down the road? Just do it."
It's a good Nike ad, okay?
Sandra has an answer.
Certainly address that.
Good attorney question.
Sandra, please.
I'll take that as the attorney question. It's an excellent question, but the basis for it is actually democracy. When the California Legislature codified the Davis Sterling Act in 1985, it added provisions that would require associations to follow the guidelines in their governing documents to amend or restate both their CCNRs and their bylaws. And the idea is, since the CCNRs are reported documents that attach to the land, that's the covenant clause, I promise to abide by this, that's the definition for the covenant that's applicable here, we also agreed that any changes or amendments would be subject to the approval of the membership. And in restating the governing documents, the board of directors did their part in the heavy lifting in determining what were all of the provisions that would clean up the mess of the documents and would allow the homeowners then to make an informed decision. The board is not allowed by law or by its governing documents to unilaterally just clean up this mess, therefore, it's painted out, we have to vote.
Thank you, Sandra. The idea of kicking the can down the road has just actually landed in the laps of your current Third Board, and they're doing what I can see is the best they can, given the circumstances that they've inherited. Thank you. Next question, please, Elise.
Lynn Corbeau of 3505C Bahia Blanca West asks, "Are there any provisions in these revised documents that would preclude the board or architectural committee from considering and approving a grant of exclusive use of common area that meets the criteria for an exception listed in Davis Sterling 4600B? If not, does the procedure for board approval include the board's and/or architectural committee's finding that one of the exceptions applies and what facts support the finding?"
That's a very interesting question also, because we are also dealing with common areas. May I ask a member of the board to address that? Elise? Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I want to go back to the Davis Sterling Act and Civil Code 4600 that she refers to, and specifically, the title is "Grant of Excess Use Common Area." Small paragraph, I'll just read it to you. "Unless the governing documents specify a different percentage, the affirmative vote of members owning at least 67% of a separate interest in the common interest development shall be required before the board may grant exclusive use of any portion of the common area to a member." Then it goes on to explain if -- or how you can justify this and the reasons that you can use for this. But the matter of fact is, this is in law. There's nothing we can do as an architectural committee. It's just right here. And I think it was further specified this year and last year in special cases that came forward, which we're using as guidance for this.
Precedent.
Precedent, right.
Thank you. And again, I'm hopeful that that was a satisfactory answer to your question. We are bound by Sterling-Davis. There's no question about that, okay? Next question, please, Elise.
Chong Ho from Manor 5449 asks, "With regards to Article 14 amendments, new CCNRs, and Article 13 amendments, new bylaws, what is needed to pass an amendment? A, greater than 50% yes votes from all members, or B, greater than 50% yes votes from members who cast their votes? If it is B, and I do not support it, how can I vote to support the other items? Can this be a separate item for voting?"
That's a good question, one that's been on my mind a little bit. Robert?
I'll be happy to answer that. Well, I can give you an answer that I think will make you very happy. The new proposal requires 50% plus 1 of the full membership, regardless of the number who vote. So it's consistent. In other words, right now, it's 66.67% of the full membership that has to approve the changes under the new CCNRs and bylaws. It would be 50% plus 1 of the membership, not those who voted.
That's a good answer. Thank you. Elise, may we have the next question, please?
Yes. G. Charles Camulgeon from 2286N Villa Puerta asks, "Why is the board restating the rental/leasing regulations? This will cause a tremendous devaluation of properties in Laguna Woods, which in fact has already started because of this particular proposed change. Anyone owning a condominium is allowed to rent it whenever they want. These are not co-ops. The non-owner occupancy count by management is greatly flawed. Owners who have their property in trusts or directly in the name of family or others and therefore not in their name and/or have different mailing addresses, such as family or others taking care of their trusts or affairs, are being counted as non-owner occupied. The current CCNRs are 49 pages. The restated is 144 pages. Given the simplicity to resolve the insurance language in the current CCNR and the extremely costly pork-barreling that the board has presented, there is no choice but to vote no."
Okay, I think that they have many different questions in there.
Yes.
And I would like to defer to Sandra on these to clarify, please.
All right. So, I don't believe, based on the information that I have, that the system of counting owner occupies being conducted by VMS, the associations, managers, agents, is flawed. And I certainly would appreciate, as I know the board would, any additional information that would support that, and then we could address the subsects of this question, if we could, you know, what is specifically that you are addressing in the FNC scheme. The rental provisions in the restated documents specifically say that they are subject to controlling law. So at any particular time, the sections of the proposed CCNRs that would be inconsistent with controlling law would be put aside, and controlling law would be applicable. So, for example, in your scenario, if there was a trust or a family-owned unit, controlling law would talk about how you designate a person to be a member slash owner of that unit. So, I think that you may be misreading the proposed language in the governing documents, and we really would like to hear from you with more information so that both the board directors, myself, and all the other listeners who are attending today could really delve into that a little deeper. I believe that there might be a misreading, and again, I'm very open to hearing what you have to say, and I look forward to your supplemental information.
Thank you, Sandra. Not every situation fits into the neat FAQs or fits into the same box, okay? And I know that your board is willing to go deep if they need to, so I'm hopeful that was answered -- your question was answered. Can we move on?
Xiao Li Zhang states, "I am out of town. I would like to know more about the vote. My understanding is that there is only one ballot for everything, combining 59 mutuelles and changes in CCNRs. Why don't we have a separate ballot for amendments?"
Why don't we have a separate ballot for the amendments? Seems as though the questioner is implying that these two are disconnected. Do we have an answer for that, please?
Sandra wanted to address this.
Legal.
Sandra?
The amendments to the governing documents would be voted on separately. Let's say instead of restating the governing documents, the board makes three amendments. Those three amendments would be voted on separately, and the ballot and the paper letter to the ballot would explain if they could be approved separately or voting for one requires approval for all. When you restate a set of governing documents, such as the documents that are proposed to the membership, they are -- it is literally a one-size-fits-all vote. You are voting on the brand-new, restated governing documents. You are voting on the brand-new restated governing documents. They're not specific amendments to provisions, which is the very reason that we can't provide a red line to the old documents because these are new documents based on information that was obtained from the Board of Directors, management, policies and procedures, rules and regulations of governance, working with BMS for standards and procedures. All of that went into the blasting of these restated governing documents. Since the ballot specifically says we vote yes, we vote no. And there will be a one-size-fits-all. You've taken all of the documents, all of the provisions and the restations together, and you're approving votes.
From my understanding, that's the point, okay? This is what we're attempting to do, okay? What your Third Board is working through right now. Elise, may we have another question, please?
Yes, the next questions come from Constance Matzenbacher of 2401 Villa Mariposa. She has listened to the first streaming presentation, but she still has several questions, and there are six of them. If the Board pleases, I can ask them one by one for addressing.
Yeah, if you can give us a two, a couple of them. And if we have time, we can come back to the rest of them.
Okay. Number one, "There are two issues currently being addressed by the Third Mutual Board: updating the bylaws and CCNRs and the large increase in insurance costs. Please explain in more detail exactly how these two issues are connected." Her second question is, "Please explain the impact to the homeowner of the proposed changes to the bylaws and CCNRs directly related to the insurance cost increase, e.g., not covering full replacement value."
I think that was in your speech.
I think we've answered the second question.
Let me just say this, Constance. You and I spoke last night, and I actually addressed all six of your questions last night in a, when I met with the Garden Villa folks. I spent an hour and a half last night, a meeting with captains from the Garden Villa, and Constance's six questions were all answered last night. So rather than go back over all of them, I think we've already addressed them.
Just in fairness, is there another question among the six which might be different from the ones we've asked before? Thank you for looking.
Are there certain tracts of Third Mutual with their own current bylaws and CCNRs been identified as affected differently by the projected insurance cost increase due to being in a fire zone, such as Gate 11? Does consolidating the bylaws and CCNRs mitigate this risk by spreading the risks throughout your mutual?
I'll answer that, as I answered last night, Constance. The answer is, even under the current CCNRs and our current way of doing insurance, the risk factor for one particular area as opposed to another has already been mitigated by pooling it all together and the insurances, the cost of the insurance is shared equally by everyone. And even under the new CCNRs, that will continue the same way.
Great. Thank you for your question, Constance. And we're hopeful that they were answered to your satisfaction and to your friend's satisfaction in the Garden Villa Association. Elise, let's move on, please.
Donna Stacy says, "I reviewed the proposed restatement of CCNRs via the link in your email from yesterday. I didn't see requirements for storage cabinets in the three-story garages. Can you provide information concerning the size and type of cabinets that will be available after the new CCNRs take effect?"
Steve, thank you.
Okay, a lot of that comes before the Architectural, Control and Standards Committee. We have passed standards that you can go into the Alterations Department and look at. It covers all the storage cabinets, what you can do, what you can't do, and who's responsible for what. So we've passed this by resolution, because everything from that committee has to come to the Board. So if she would check with the Alteration Department, she can get clarification of this question.
I think the point is also that nothing has changed under the new CCNRs.
Correct.
What existed before in terms of what they're allowed to do, in terms of size and location, things of that nature, all is still with the Alterations Department and will stay the same after the new CCNRs are approved.
Thank you both. Another question, please, Elise.
David and Miriam Gross from 5515G Paseo de Lago West state, "We have not received a ballot. We are in Florida, and I'd like to know if it has been mailed out to me here or to the unit we own."
Any, I believe that that's in your ballpark.
Thank you. Could you repeat the question again? I was writing some.
Yes. "We have not received a ballot. We are in Florida, and I'd like to know if it has been mailed out to me here or to the unit we own."
So, and that's a really good question, and I think we might hear that question again. The ballots are mailed to the address that we have on file for you. So if we have your Florida address on file, your ballot is going to come to you there.
And as we've stated before, it may take a little longer to get to Florida than it would to be somewhere in the village. So we're hopeful that you will get your ballot.
In any event, though, if they don't receive their ballot, the Inspector of Elections does have a phone number on David, if you could provide that, or staff ten. Your homeowner can contact the Inspector of Elections Director to obtain a replacement ballot.
Yes, and that number, thank you, Sandra, that number is 855-240-0363. And that's the Inspector of Elections Dubicate Ballot Request Call Center. And it's available 24/7, so you can call that number.
As a little reminder, the ballots are due November 2nd. So if you have not received your ballot as of yet, I would perhaps call that number, okay? Or wait maybe a day or two if you're not in the village.
I'd just like to add, especially for the folks in Florida and elsewhere who are out of state, that please keep in mind the ballot has to be received by the Director of Elections by November 2nd. So please make sure you mail it with sufficient time for it to arrive.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandra. May we move on, please?
Sharon Gaiman from 3020A asks, "I want to understand if the current architectural standards are changing before I vote. Will the current Third Architectural standards change in any way if the new CCNRs are approved?"
I believe that question has been answered, but let's have a reaffirmation of that, please. Steve?
Yeah, any standard that we come up with goes through the Architectural Committee and then is voted on by the Board. So that is basically separate from what the rewrite is of the bylaws and CCNRs. However, the governance flow is still the same. Things constantly change in this. Even Davis Sterling will give us different things from time to time. So we have to deal with that as it happens. But anything that there's not a standard for, you need to come forward and ask for a decision through the Architectural, Control and Standards Committee. And once again, you can go through the Alterations Department to get a form to fill out that'll synopsize what the situation is, and then it'll be presented to our committee.
Thank you. Elise, if you please?
Kathy Garrus of 3138B Villa Vista, "I would venture to say in my area, almost 50% are renters. How are you getting the info to the owners?"
Good question. Robert?
Okay, yes, it's a very good question. And we have that situation in a number of places within Third Mutual. All the owner, the members who are the owners, receive through their home address or their address on file the ballots and all the information. It does not go to the tenants of the residence.
So once again, if you haven't received your ballot, please check. Next question, please, Elise.
Jeff Finch states, "I am the owner of a two-bedroom condo manor at 2353 Villa Mariposa West. I purchased the unit in 2007. The property has been rented to the same tenant for the past 10 years. The proposed restated CCNRs include a two-year waiting period for leasing a manor, Section 6.6B, and a 30% cap on the maximum number of units that may be leased at any given time, Section 6.6C. The presentation materials state existing owners will be grandfathered under the two-year lease waiting period, but it was less clear if that applied to the 30% cap. Questions: What percentage of the manners are now rented? And if the number of leased manners is approaching or now exceeds the 30% limit, how will the administration determine what owners are eliminated from renting their units?"
Very, very good question. Robert?
Okay, it is a very good question. First of all, the 30% cap is what's currently in place, and we will continue to have that in place as we move forward with the new CCNRs. That's not going to change. If you are currently renting your manor, as this gentleman is and indicates, then you will be allowed to continue to rent that manor. And if your tenant vacates, let's suppose that we're at the 30% mark, and you are currently leasing your unit. If you are currently leasing a unit and we're at the 30% mark, and your tenant vacates the unit, you will still be allowed to re-rent that unit. You'll be given a period of time, I believe it's six months, in which to re-rent the unit. If you re-rent the unit within those six months, there's no issue, no problem, you'll have a new tenant. If you don't rent the unit within those six months, then you will not be allowed to continue to rent. You'll go on the list at that point, unless you're going to be renovating or doing something of that nature and ask for an extension. So it will not have any impact on the 30% lease. Currently, we're about 28.4%, or 5% something of that nature?
Yeah, 28.2%.
20.2%.
28.2%.
28.2% against the cap of 30%.
So seemingly, it's bumping that 30%. That's a good question, because I know someone in a similar situation.
Right. However, if we get to the 30%, then we're going to create a list of people who have asked to want to rent. They'll go on that list, and if it then drops below 30%, we'll then allow the next person on the list to rent.
Steve?
Yes, there's a procedure already in place that Sandra's looked at and that we've adopted. It's a procedure that outlines the steps and people in different situations, how it's handled, such as the snowbirds when they go, such as somebody who is not moving in immediately or whatever. But it outlines how every procedure is handled. So if they want a copy of that, we can get that to them.
Okay, if you need a copy of that, please contact the Third Board Mutual. All right? Very good. Thank you. Good question. I hope your answers are satisfactory. Thanks. Next question, please.
Our next question comes from Janie Hirschberg from 5574 Luze del Sol, Unit A. "Please tell people to mail their yes votes back as soon as possible. I sent some mail on September 11th to the Administration Office, and I understand it did not arrive until the 18th. And I also sent some other mail, and it took two weeks. So mail can be slow. My question is, is the drop box out front of the community center yet? And where exactly is it located?"
Very good. We've already had some information on that, and that goes to you, Elise.
I'd be glad to answer that question. Outside, directly outside the community center, there are two boxes. There is a black box that faces the parking lot that is not the box that you want to drop your ballot in. Directly across from the community center, double doors, there are, I believe, three iron chairs. On one of those chairs is the blue ballot box that has the pink and yellow ballot envelopes pasted to the outside as examples. And there is a sign directly above it that says, "Village elections only." That is the ballot box that you want to drop your ballots in. Again, that's directly across from the double doors of the community center. It's blue, you can't miss it.
Sounds simple. Match the ballot inside to the top of the box outside. Very good. Thank you. Very good, Elise. May we have the next question, please?
Yes, Judith Hurst from 3138C Villa Vista asks, "What is the reason for the dues increase if the CCNRs and bylaws are passed and Third remains part of the insurance group with United and GRF, which are not increasing their dues? Why are other changes in the CCNRs being made now which have no relationship to the insurance issue? What are the total legal costs for making changes to the CCNRs and bylaws?"
I believe Robert is going to weigh in on that.
I'll take part of it. I'll take part of it. I'll take.
We love to share.
We did raise the per-manner-per-month assessment this year, $20. And that's because the cost of insurance for us went up dramatically. You have to remember, we continue to maintain the $700 million in insurance. In previous years, United joined us in that full $700 million. This year, United, because they have greater flexibility and don't have to have 100% replacement, they opted instead to join us only for the first $425 million. Their premiums, therefore, were dramatically less for $425 million, a share of that $425 million, than ours is for the share of the $425 million plus what we have to pay for the additional $275 million by ourselves that they are no longer sharing in. So therefore, our costs went up far more than their costs, again, in part because we're required to try to have 100% replacement, and they're not. And again, that's exactly why we're trying to change the CCNRs.
Steve?
What can I add to that?
There was other parts of the question, but I don't remember.
It's the other part?
Can you bring back the other parts to that?
Yes. "What is the reason for the dues increase if the CCNRs and bylaws are passed and Third remains part of the insurance group with United and GRF, which are not increasing their dues? Why are other changes in the CCNRs being made now which have no relationship to the insurance issue? What are the total legal costs for making changes to the CCNRs and bylaws?"
Okay, one of the reasons why the Board elected to have multiple topics covered in this is that everything affects your pocketbook and things needed to be corrected and fixed. We only put like four or five of them in there for you to see. But it's time that these things were totally rewritten, brought up to speed, and clarified with current laws. We just flat had to do it. It would be so confusing for you to try to look at something redlined and make heads or tails out of this. So that's why we put them together. And like I said, everything has an impact on your pocketbook. You may say, okay, well, what about the merging of all the HOAs together? Well, simply, it goes back to staff time and legal cost. With all the CCNRs that are out there for the different HOAs, they have to be researched, first identified as to which HOA they apply to. Then research has to be done into that specific CCNR for that HOA, and then brought forward for a final recap of an answer to a question. So not only does legal get into this, but staff gets into it too. So whenever we pose a question, either to staff or to legal, us being the Board, it takes them a lot of time to go through this. If we merge the HOAs together, then there's one set. It's very easy to go to that, research it, and move on. Instead of taking legal time, possibly 50 minutes, it can take them 10 to 12 minutes, and then they move on. They're ready to make an opinion. So all of these different things that you see in there affect your pocketbook, either through assessments or what you might pay for other services that are being provided. So Sandra, would you like to add anything to that?
Robert would like to join us, please?
Let me jump in a second. You also need to understand, we've talked with many Board members who were previously on Third Mutual Board, and you've heard the expression already used today, "Kick the can down the road." And that's what many other Boards did, even though they knew and wanted to actually revise. They thought that the uphill climb to get the 66.67% was near impossible, and therefore, they didn't want to take the time or effort. This Board probably would have kicked the can down the road as well until we came up with the insurance issue. Once the insurance issue hit us, we had a fiduciary responsibility to come to you to make that change. And since we were making that change and going for the 66.67%, we thought we might as well go ahead and make all the other changes that the other Boards had wanted to make, but because they didn't have that tipping issue like we have, they held off. We're now compelled to go forward.
Thank you. Sandra, would you like to add anything to that? Sandra, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think that between the two of them, they did a brilliant job.
Great. Thank you. Let's move on, please.
Our next comment comes from Maxine Basset of 5276 Pino. "I saw a comment on Nextdoor, and I would like to know the following. Is it true that the owners will now be responsible for upkeep and repair on the Catalina Model Condos exterior water heater doors? Since there are three water heaters in those cabinets, which appear to be under the garages, which owner will have to pay the cost of the doors for all three owners? How will those costs be split? I hope this is not true."
Again, this is a question that doesn't fit into the normal box, okay?
The answer is, it's not true. The owner is not responsible. The mutual is responsible for those doors. Your owner, though, is responsible for their own water heater that's inside that cabinet, but the mutual is responsible for the doors.
Simple. Thank you. Next, please.
Our next question comes from Jerry in Maryland Gross of 5577A Luz del Sol. "What change are the cost and services for the unit owners that may result from the change in the bylaws? Why was there no independent review provided for the proposed CCNRs and bylaws changes like we get for items on public ballots?"
Understand the question? Okay?
Partly I do. Can you read that, please?
Yes. "What change are the costs and services for the unit owners that may result from the change in the bylaws? Why was there no independent review provided for the proposed CCNRs and bylaws changes like we get for items on public ballots?"
Sandra, do you want to weigh in on this one?
That was cheating, Steve, but sure, I'll weigh in on that. Their independent review for our formal governmental entities is different clearly than how homeowners associations operate. And we prepared a very extensive questionnaire to the Association's Board of Directors, who, along with VMS, reviewed the questionnaire and made sure, as did I, that the board's questions to the answers to those questions were correct. And from there, we commenced our preparation of the governing documents. They went to the Board of Directors, who frankly are independent, because they didn't draft those documents, to make sure that they were consistent with the questionnaires that they filled out. We did have at Third of Benny Hills Mutual, an independent review. At our last town hall, we had a guest speaker, Janet Powers. She was one of my esteemed colleagues in the homeowners association industry. She, like myself, is a C- Pal, so she's really quite at the top of her game. And she reviewed the governing documents and gave them her thumbs up. So in a sense, even though not required, we did have an independent review of those governing documents.
Thank you, Sandra. Robert?
I'd like to address the first part of the question. I think the first part of the question asks, you know, how much additional cost will there be? If we get the CCNRs approved the way we hope, we're hoping that we can keep the additional assessments lower than they would be. If we don't pass these CCNRs, as we've indicated before, the cost of insurance alone could increase the monthly assessment by as much as about $94 per manor per month. Even with passing this new set of CCNRs and allowing us greater flexibility insurance, I'd be remiss if I didn't say to you, there probably will still be some increase in assessment, but it certainly won't be anything near the $94 per manor per month.
Thank you, Robert. Annie shaking her head? Care to weigh in, Annie?
No, I have nothing else to add to that. It was very well stated.
Thank you. Please, Elise, if we may.
Margaret Klein asks, "What's the hurry? Why can this not wait until all people can have real town hall meetings, not this disconnected town hall that is not really a town hall at all? This is 144 pages long. Are you putting this in our faces because you're telling people if we don't do it, our maintenance costs will go up? That is a lousy excuse for pushing something through that will dramatically affect residents. You represent this community. Did you forget that? There are some changes in here that many residents are not going to agree with you on. Residents have every right to have their Q&amp;A in person and with board and lawyers present. You can wait until that can actually happen."
We are in a pandemic, which is not getting any better. We're not able to flatten the curve. But I will defer this question to one of our board members.
Well, I can start with that. Margaret, while I hear your concern, I think that you're going a little off base here with what we're trying to do. We are bringing to you and raising the alarm that if we don't do something about insurance alone, it's going to basically eat our lunch, okay? We have told you that we've raised the insurance, or excuse me, the assessment for this coming year by $20. That's to help us offset a little bit of the increased insurance amount that went up significantly for this year. And we have curtailed some programs in total or deferred others for later time. That we had to do this year to the tune of about $2 million to try to help us with this insurance cost. If you don't want to vote yes and let it go, guess what? You're looking at $94 per manor per month, somewhere thereabouts, coming up on 2022. You've got to understand that the clock is ticking. We have to take some action on this. You can't bury your head in the sand like an ostrich. Everybody has to get into this to understand what the situation is and what the impact is on you as far as the potential impact on assessments. So please don't look at this negatively. Look at the clock. The time is ticking. And we're bringing that to you.
Thank you. Robert?
Just like to add, you know, everybody does understand that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and this virus has affected the quality of life for all of us. And it's affected the ability for us to gather collectively. And we don't know when that's going to end. We don't know when we'll be able to all get back together in the boardroom. That's why you only see three of us in the boardroom right now, because we have to be spaced out. There's no way that we could have all 10 members of our board here at the same time. So we have no idea when we'll be able to have the kind of town hall with lawyers present and members present. We don't know when that's going to occur. Is that going to be three months, six months, nine months, a year from now? If we wait till then, then we're going to really be stuck with the current insurance bill that we're just not going to be able to avoid. So it's a balancing act. And we feel it was more important to go forward now rather than wait.
Annie, if you please?
Yes, I just wanted to add, every minute that we continue in the current situation is a minute that we incur higher expenses at a time when our insurance premiums are skyrocketing. The longer we put off a solution, the more likely resident services will be compromised, and more of our operational reserves will be depleted. This situation continues to escalate. The ballot proposition will give us greater control over our insurance costs, which is one of the biggest portions of our overall expenses. So vote yes. Thank you.
I was an English teacher. I'm going to take 10 seconds. There was a wonderful poem by Thomas Hardy called "The Convergence of the Twain", which was about the Titanic and the iceberg. This is a little bit of a similar situation. Two things have come together. That's the assessed valuation of Third Mutual and the cost of the insurance. So these two have just collided and landed in the lap of our directors. So that's my takeaway. Elise, if you will, please.
Jules Zallen of 3124A asks, "Why do the proposed new bylaws contain a copyright notice claiming that our lawyers own the copyright to bylaws that Third Mutual has paid a lot of money to create? The notice presumes to prohibit any use of its contents, and the copyright statement in part reads, 'September 30, 2020 by Swetelson Gottlieb. Reproduction of its content for any project other than Third Laguna Woods Mutual is prohibited.' If Third paid for it, Third should own it."
Sounds like a lawyer question to me. Sandra?
Yeah, it's just going to sound so defensive, isn't it? But the answer is that because Third paid for it, because Swetelson Gottlieb prepared it, it is proprietary. And we reserve the right for Third to utilize the documents that they paid for. We don't want another homeowners association to be able to take that work product and prepare their governing documents based on the money and time spent by Third on the documents. And that's the reason for the copyright notice.
Thank you. Anyone on board care to weigh in? Thank you very much, Sandra. And Jules, I hope that answers your question. Thank you. Elise, please, if we may.
Ellen Suboda of 3490B Calle Azul says, "Under the section Vehicles and Parking, I have a question on Item 5 on Page 54. What is the reason behind the statement, 'The washing of vehicles is prohibited within the development'? Under the previous section, it says that washing vehicles is permitted as long as a bucket and hose that shuts off are used. Can you tell me the reason behind this change? I am guessing the answer to this question is to first of all vote yes and get it approved, and then address the small concern I am asking. Is this the right step to take?"
Who cares to address the car wash question?
That's a new one to me.
I was under the impression that you could wash your car with the bucket and the hose in place. And I have been, being very conscientious of the water situation that we constantly deal with in Southern California. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, my understanding is you can use a bucket and go out and do your car as long as you don't have running water. But you can't just stand there with a hose on and do that. It's a waste of water. We're trying to conserve water. And people may not understand that our water is supplied by the El Toro Water District. Every drop of water that comes in here, they have to go out to get. We don't have our own aquifers. Okay? And that's for either wastewater or drinkable potable water. They just have to go get it. So we are really in a conservation mode, so to speak, on this. So please be aware that that was told me day one in 2014. We couldn't do it, and as far as I know, that's still the ruling today.
Thank you. I'm hopeful that that answers your question. Elise, if you would, please.
Craig and Carolyn Pardo of 5036 Avenida del Sol ask, "If the insurance is the main issue, why can't we vote to amend the requirements in the CCNRs for insurance and put off the rest so there could be input for evaluation of other possible changes in the CCNRs before consolidating? Is it because it will be difficult to get the percentage of votes needed for later consolidation if the issues do not impact our assessments as the insurance issue does? Also, I am concerned that under Section on Insurance in the restated CCNRs, a future board could determine that insurance is too costly and with pressure not to increase assessments, they will have the option of eliminating insurance for the owners' units, leaving owners needing to insure themselves. Is there any guarantee of insurance in the restatement?"
Fair question, okay? And I believe that's been partially addressed, but Robert would like to weigh in on that.
Okay. There is no guarantee, except the fiduciary responsibility. Remember, all the board members also are owners here. So we are just as interested ourselves in making sure that our units are protected the same way your unit is protected. I doubt that any board, in its wisdom, would decide not to have any insurance. There has been, however, the discussion by some people in the community about self-insurance. And we're just not financially in a position to be able to self-insure. And you would not be able to, as an individual homeowner, be able to insure the building that you live in because you don't literally own the outside of the building. That's a Third Mutual responsibility. So we will always have insurance, and we will make sure, at least as long as I'm on the board and I know that other members of the board feel the same way, we'll always have insurance that will protect the mutual.
Thank you, Robert.
Sandra has a comment, too.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that under both the David Sterling Act and the California Corporations Code, the Board of Directors has fiduciary duties to the association and therefore to its members. And the duty to insure are one of the obligations of the association's Board of Directors. This entire issue with insurance is to allow discretion to the board so they can make an informed decision as to the insurances that would be required without being held to the full replacement value standard, which is frankly, in this reinsurance market, impossible to obtain. As to the first part of the question, very, very intuitive. Yeah, the insurance provision was the trigger to get the vote out into the Board of Directors, who have been talking in fire boards for years about doing this, because it is a very, very arduous task. Thought that the insurance provision and the effect on assessments would get out the vote. And the board decided that this is that moment in time to take advantage of that opportunity to finish the documents so that this board and all future boards will be able to govern somewhere in this century.
Very good. Thank you. Remember, I mentioned "The Convergence of the Twain"? If my memory serves me correctly, the last word of that particular poem is "now." So I think we are going to try to do this now. May we have another question, please?
Yes. Ginger Reynolds states, "This section, under Maintenance and Repair, really alarms me." Open quote. "Section 7.6 Damage to Units A. Owner Responsibility. Each owner shall be responsible for repairing and restoring any damage to the owner's unit, whether such damage is caused by fire, water intrusion, or other casualty, including but not limited to the abatement of mold. This obligation shall apply no matter the cause or source of the damage, including but not limited to an improvement or item located within the common area or another unit, and whether or not an insurance policy carried by the corporation may cover any portion of the cost to repair or restore such damage. This sounds like I will have to buy more insurance in a separate policy in order to protect myself from a catastrophic loss. What will the HOA policy truly cover when damage is caused by fire, water intrusion, or other casualty?"
Steve?
I'm just reflecting back on the question on it. Understand that the insurance that we carry here is to cover significant loss, the rebuilding cost, and that is to rebuild the structure as was initially built. As far as the homeowners concerned, they have to carry their own homeowners insurance or HO6 policy for their contents in any upgrades that they have done on the inside. So that is still your responsibility, folks. That is something that, because you have a deed on your property, that's your responsibility to handle. We can help you if you have questions on that. Let us know, and if you need to be steered in the right way as to what an HO6 policy covers, let us know, and we can get you to a person who can answer those questions for you.
Very important. Okay? Please make sure you've done your due diligence, really, by checking the bylaws and the amendments and the separate paragraphs. So thank you for doing that. Elise, may we have the next question, please?
Yes, this question may need a little bit of reiteration. This is from Richard Johnston of 5486A Paseo Del Lago. "I need clarification regarding insurance coverage. Number one, coverage will be reduced from 100% to what? Who then is responsible for the difference? Without a yes vote, a recent video showed our current insurance cost would increase to $4.2 million. What is the estimated cost with a yes vote? Last, it appears that this is a burden shift from the mutual to the owner. What are those changes that owners should be made aware of?"
There are two questions there.
Let me start with the second question.
Yeah, a second question.
The second question is, there will be no shift in burden to the owners related to the insurance. Absolutely no shift. As to what that dash is that you want to fill in from 100% down to, we don't have an answer to that off the top of our heads. A lot of it's going to depend upon next year, what the cost of the insurance is. You know, we had, besides... You know, we had, besides the reevaluation this year, there was a 20% increase in the insurance premiums charged by the insurance companies because of the wildfires. Not only the wildfires here, remember, we're dealing with national and international insurance companies. So for instance, Travelers has our first $50 million, the first layer of $50 million of our insurance. They are an international company. But here, just in the United States, they're dealing with wildfires on the West Coast, tornadoes in the Midwest, hurricanes on the East, and they're paying out lots and lots of money for those kinds of things. So we had a 20% increase in the cost of insurance, separate from the cost of the reevaluation, what that added to the premium. So we don't know what it's going to be next year, and we can't plug in for you a hard percentage into that category. We have to wait and see. First of all, the CCNRs have to be approved, and if they are approved, it depends on, is United with us, or are we going it alone? And what's the cost of the insurance next year? But we will have, as Sandra indicated earlier, we have a fiduciary responsibility, as dictated by David Sterling, to have sufficient insurance to cover replacement costs for the vast majority of Third Mutual, and we will do that.
Yes, Steve?
Just as an add-on to that, while we can't fill in the blank, we have some terms that you need to consider. We have to find some way of dealing or acquiring cost-effective, affordable, and available insurance, and that could fluctuate from year to year. We just have no way of knowing. And to tell you the truth, the insurance companies are not going to let you know what their rates are going to be until they've gone through and done what they're going to do on seeing what their risk is. So there's no way of knowing at this point what it's actually going to be, but we are forecasting now of what probably will happen. We have an expert who's an advisor to us, knows the insurance company very well. He's the kind of person that can call presidents of companies and find out, at least get an idea from them, what's happening. So based on that, we are having to guess, to a certain extent, what is out there. And I know Sandra wants to make a comment here, too.
Sandra, please.
Thank you. I think that Richard Johnston is asking a question that others are asking as well, and I think maybe we have missed the mark in our responses. Everything that both Steve and Robert just stated is 100% accurate. But the question that Richard asked is insurance going from 100% to what? And there is another factor here that you should be aware of as you're evaluating these governing documents. There's an acronym, it's PML, and it is probable maximum loss. And a probable maximum loss is created by experts, insurance experts, in our homeowners' association industry that looked at our geography, looked at, just as Robert was saying, the current status of insurance in our geographic area and outside our geographical area, and how insurance companies have taken hits because of catastrophic damages. In California, we worry about earthquakes and fires. In Florida, which affects insurance rates in California, they worry about hurricanes. The probable maximum loss currently for all of the villages, all of the four entities in the village, is $150 million. That's it. This board has made the decision, even with that, that they have the discretion at this moment in time, under their documents, to ensure at that level, they said that is not good enough for us and our members. We are going to look at a higher number insurable value based on all of the criteria that's available to us. So Richard, there is one other criteria that is utilized when you go from 100% to another number, and that is the that year's probable maximum loss. And that will be one of the factors this and future boards will take into consideration when they decide the level of insurance to be purchased for Third with the Hill Mutual.
Thank you. So many factors to consider, no question about that. Elise, if we may, please.
Marcin Rhodes from 5324A. "Cover complete disaster or extreme disaster conditions. This is ridiculous to buy so much excess insurance. So see that if that would be a practical alternative to what you're trying to say."
The answer's simple to that. Pass the CCNRs the way we've put them forward to you, and we can look into that as an option. But right now, that is not an option for this board or for this mutual.
Right now, with the CCNRs, the way they're written, their hands are tied, okay? If you vote yes, we can perhaps untie the hands a little bit and consider lots and lots of propositions, okay? Lots of suggestions, and maybe even in person, which would be my heart's delight, okay? Elise, please.
Hyke Handler from 5321B, Bahia Blanca West, references CCNR Section 6.5B, lease waiting period. Title of condo was registered in 2016 under a trust name, and trustee occupies the residence. If trustee dies, can successor trustee lease out condo as the title of condo is since 2016 registered under a trust name? Thank you for clarifying this point.
Good question. If the estate is in a trust, can it be leased?
The answer is yes, as long as it doesn't mean that, as long as we're not over the 30% cap. The answer's yes.
Yes, no answers are good. May we move on, please?
Well, let me just clarify something. It would be good for that person to get a hold of our policy on how to handle the 30% cap and go through it, because these are things that are actually stated and taken into consideration in there. Because we can't just say, oh, okay, this group is excluded from the 30% cap. Can't do that. Everything has to come down to that 30% cap. So please request a copy of that, and we'll get it to you.
Good. Elise, if you please.
John Libby from 3301A, Villa Corizo, references, under Item 6.6B in the new CCNRs, under lease waiting period. Is this something new, or is it current policy?
This again is a lease question? Is the 30% new, or the six months new? How does that work?
30% is not new, okay? The waiting period for two years is a little new. But there are some laws that do affect this, and I would like Sandra to address those because those are somewhat significant. You may not have heard about them before.
So the two lease waiting periods were decided on by the Board of Directors based on homeowner input in the last few years about investor purchasers in the community. And that was the reason that the board decided to go with the lease waiting period. There is a new law that was designated law last year that might affect that provision of the governing documents, which is why in the September 30th version, which is the final version, the CR review and voting on specifically says in the heading of that subsection, "Subject to Controlling Law." So if it turns out that controlling law will no longer allow for that lease waiting period, and the jury is still out on that issue, then of course, that lease waiting period will not be able to be enforceable. If the new law does not affect the lease waiting period, then it will be enforced.
Okay, thank you.
Stand by for news.
Elisa, if we may, have the next question, please.
Yes, this is from an anonymous manor owner. "In our current CCNRs, Article 1 defines unit and even lists what is included. In the restated CCNRs, the definition of unit is very, very different. What is included no longer is listed. Why should we want to lose those inclusions? We all agree that there is a problem, but this solution, and as you just mentioned, newly crafted, means what we had is gone. Please consider it is the solution we question, not that we need to address a problem. This is a major change, and we need to understand the ramifications of a complete rewrite."
I would like some clarity, if we could, on what some of the inclusions were that are gone. But I know that some things that we had in the past, new laws took precedent over, and we had to take them out. There are statutory requirements that Sacramento put on us that said, here is what has to be stated, you cannot add to, you cannot amend, you cannot take away from, and it has to be stated that way. I asked the same question, okay? But there are certain things that Sacramento has done that takes it away out of our hands. So your voice doesn't necessarily count on whether it's in or whether it's out.
Thank you, Steve. Robert?
I'd like to be able to help the anonymous person with a little more information. If the anonymous person would please call back into the line and leave their name and manor number, I will go back and look at exactly what they're asking, because off the top of my head, I don't know, I don't remember what the old definition was versus what the new definition is. So to be able to be more responsive to the owner, if they would please call back in so that we can, I can make a direct contact with them, and I will attempt to answer their question directly.
Thank you. Yes, we're getting close to the end here, so let's move along.
We have another anonymous owner. "What happened to the savings we should have due to closures over the last six months?"
I'll be happy to take that.
Great. Robert?
We anticipate by the end of this year to have somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000 in savings as a result of the close with COVID and the layoff of employees, the lack of outside services, et cetera. And we are, remember, we said that we increased the per manor per month charge for this year $20, but the actual fact is, out of reserves, we're taking another approximately $46 per manor per month to pay for the insurance. That $600,000 to $700,000 in surplus is going to be used to help offset some of those insurance
Everyone seems to have that particular question. We're shut down, and what's happening to the money? Okay?
Well, let me add one other thing to it, because it's come up in a different question, and that's, how come with the amenities, we can't get a refund? That's a GRF issue, okay? We cannot answer for them, and they have spent time studying this with the CFO and with staff, and I cannot begin to answer that question. But that is an answer, or that's a question you got to pose to GRF and them alone.
I think we're all hopeful that this pandemic will pass and pass quickly, and we'll be able to return to what we might call a new normal, but we're not there yet. Thank you. Yes, Elise, please, if you may.
Our last question is, if we pass the new CCNRs, will the $20 per manor per month be rescinded?
I wish I could say yes, but the simple answer is probably not. And the reason I say probably not is that, at this point, we have already bound the insurance. We're obligated to the premiums that were established, which includes that $20 per manor per month. The only way that I see that there's a possibility of that changing is if, A, the CCNRs are approved, B, United does opt out, and we reduce the amount of coverage that we have, there might be some savings. But in all honesty, probably not.
And the other thing to remember is, all of these programs that we have deferred or permanently put on hold to bring those back, we need additional money to make that happen. And remember, I said earlier, we curtailed and postponed some of these programs to the tune of $2 million. That's not easy to bring back. So we ask your understanding in that, and we hope that we can bring back those in the future.
I do believe now, according to my script, that we have a four-minute slideshow. Is that correct?
It doesn't appear that way.
Okay.
We've covered several of all those things earlier.
We covered, we covered lots of them. And if you had been tuned in on the previous two town hall meetings, you certainly were able to see that, okay? That particular visual presentation. Well, it's time to bring this question-and-answer session to a close. I'd like to thank everyone who phoned in. Your questions were succinct, to the point, and we were grateful for those. Knowing what is on your mind is very, very helpful to the board here, and again, thank you for doing that. I'm hopeful, again, that the board has answered your questions. I'm sure the community appreciates your honesty put forth today by the board. I'd like to thank all of you for joining this afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to serve here today. Here is Third Mutual President Steve Parsons to close our special session. Steve?
Thank you, David. On behalf of Third Mutual Board, I want to extend thanks to all of you for expressing your thoughts and your questions and concerns. I hope that we've at least answered most of your questions. If you still have questions remaining, let us know. You can reach out to us by texting or calling our hotline, 949-354-4199. We will be listening, and we will respond. By now, you know the issues, and we urge you to vote yes on our ballot proposition. Be on the lookout for more information online and on Channel 6 TV. Wish you all a good day. This meeting is adjourned, and now we have a brief video for you.
I'm Janet Powers. I've been a Third homeowner for over 25 years. I've been practicing community association law for over 35 years, including representing senior communities. I've reviewed the CCNRs and bylaws in detail, and I support their passage. If we do not vote to amend the CCNRs, we will pay an additional $94 a month in 2022. Help us pass the vote. Vote yes, or pay a lot more money.
We're still on air.